Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Annual Board of Education Commendation Ceremony. Thank you for being here tonight for the Annual Board of Education Commendation Ceremony. I'm Dr. Judith LaRaca, the Superintendent of the Valley Street Union Free School District 13. It's my privilege to present this program tonight that has been specifically dedicated to recognizing the achievements of our students and staff members within our outstanding district and our four schools. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to congratulate our students for all they have accomplished. The recognition you are receiving this evening is a tribute to how we value your hard work and dedication to excellence, and we hope that it will encourage you to continue, continue your outstanding efforts. We commend you and want you to know that we highly value your commitment to excellence. Thank you for inspiring us all to do our very best. Tonight, we would also like to formally recognize and honor the tremendous efforts of our staff that positively impact successful outcomes for children. Thank you for ensuring that our children receive a world-class education that will enhance their competitiveness in a global economy. To our parents and community members, we commend you on your commitment to supporting our young people to strive for high achievement. Your integral partnership ensures our children stay on the path of lifelong learning. Congratulations, and we hope you remember this evening as one of many lifetime achievements that I'm sure you will have the opportunity to attempt. We have several different art and music awards our children have excelled in. I'll be reading a brief description of each award, and then I'm going to call students' names to come up and receive an award. When we have each award, if everyone would hold their applause until the end of each group. So I will be calling an award, reading a brief description, calling students in a group, and if you could hold your applause until we're done with that group, and then I'll let you know when we can clap for that group. If everyone in the back would like to come up, there's seats up in the front rows and up along the sides. You don't have to stand in the back. There's plenty of seating up here in the front if you'd like to come forward. On the side over here, front, behind the cameras, a few seats. There's some seats in the back, right-hand side. Okay. For our first art awards, each day, students in visual arts classes use critical thinking to solve problems, make discoveries, and explore new ground. Tonight, we are celebrating the creativity and accomplishments of our young visual artists whose creations were displayed at various art exhibits. Our first series of awards goes to students who had their art displayed at the Henry Waldenberg Public Library for the month of April. We have Katrina Bajaj, Pietro Costanza, St. Cujo, Derek Hernandez, Ayann Ramen, Maximus Scuturo, Amir Doily, Ruwan Oladun. Congratulations! Okay, for our next awards, I'm gonna ask students to come up by Mrs. Boransky on this side. You're gonna come across the stage, you're gonna go down, and then you're gonna stand in front of the tables, and then we're gonna take a picture by each school. So when our, we're gonna read a bunch of names, come up this way, get your award from Dr. Dunn, walk across the stage, go down, and then line up in front of the tables. And everyone hold your applause until we're done with each group. Okay, and our art exhibit at the Waldenberg Library awardees at the James A. Dever School, Lily Anthonyson, Ariana Astrozaga, Ariana Barbosa, Jovan Badi, Marina Biscocci, Domenico Orgesi, Aubrey Cardiff, Brody Cardiff, Karina Chavez, Amelia Chilson, Joshua Siagarella, Arwa Daif, Paul Fusillo, Javier Galván, Lainey Gazali, Tyler Gilbert, Idem Hadi, Liv Ubish, Omar Iqbal, Ricardo Jean Baptiste, Samaya Karamat, Gramak Kwar, Zoa Cosmani, Mia Lee, Arya Mazaka, Hanaya Marad, Colin Murray, Steven Roy, Tyler Nunez, Alex Amajola, Leo Panisi, Lucas Rodriguez, Marin Riono, Armand Zajal, Phoenix Smart, and Frederick Micos. Okay, picture time. There we get a picture. We got one more student. Okay, and now for Howell Road. Nora Alon, Hamden Amman, Kelli Ali, Neva Austin, Milan Blackwell, Jason Chiquilo, Rafia Chowdhury, Sarish Chowdhury, Brooke Davis, Sophia Floras, Aubrey Gonzalez, Megan Gordill, Azwa Hamza, Christian Jean Philippe, Gurnaz Khor, Sahaj Breivkhor, Hafsa Khalil, Amara Khan, Ashra Khan, Peyton London, Genesis Melendez, Victoria Mois, Ethan Wakama, Lila Pascal, Francesca Piscanti, Sarish Puri, Madison Sanchez, Hireshman Singh, and Ava Tran. Congratulations, Howell Road students! And we have one other person, Katrina Baja. Congratulations! Okay, thank you, Howard. And now the Wheeler Avenue School. Abigail Adewara, Nina Badaweh, Emily Cardenon, Lucas Duber, Ruwan El Maradi, Karides Pharoah, Una Pharoah, Brooke Flood, Ariana Florenko, Camila Hernandez Baham, Charlotte Ho, Mariam Ibrahim, Justin Joseph Jr., Eric Lopez Moreno. Noah Lubin, Kariana Benice Lozano, Cameron Morales, Christian Ortiz, Amara Orville, Jason Palanco, Sophia Palanco, Olivia Pleiss, Garanjulmir Angel Ranhawa, Amina Radancic, Giancarlo Rodriguez, Harna Shavir, I'm sorry, Harna Shavir Sigal, Jaswan Singh, Evie Taveras, Emmanuel Velazquez, Aditye Vias. Congratulations to our Wheeler Arts students! Okay, and now for the Willow Road students. Wheeler, you can go, you can sit down now, thank you. Berhullo, Spaldan Azan, Valerie Burnal, Nicholas Braswell, Matthew Castillo, Miguel Castillo Figueroa, Kamari Chambers, Thomas Del Maestro, Peter Ferrante, Leo Fuchs, Kendrick Garcia, Mikaelia Pacur Asto, Victoria Randell, Connor Rogers, Sheri Seletti, Akostim Singh, Darian Nee St. Louis, Brianna Tor- Tortereala, Jaden Vitale. Congratulations to our Willow Arts students! Okay, thank you, Willow Arts students! Our next award goes to students who participated in the New York State Art Teachers Association Art in the Heart exhibit. This is the 16th annual Art in the Heart exhibit that will take place this June. This exhibit showcases student art in grades K through 12 from Nassau County at the Adelphi Performing Arts Center. We're going to have all, the students from all four schools come up at the same time. From the James A. Dever School, Victoria Carmona Felix, Ariana Nanavarakis, Peter Roman, from Howell Road, Anaya Amir, Cassandra Gallo, Stacy Gritiris, from Wheeler Avenue, Abigail Adewara, Samantha Badri Perswad, Miriam Ibrahim, Grace Okoro, Nazine Shah, from Willow Road, Annabelle Canjialosi, Nina Cologne, Prabhu Multani, and Rashid Obanil. Congratulations to our Naysada Art in the Heart exhibit artists! Our next award is the Nassau County Art Supervisors Association All-County Art Exhibit. In its 21st year, the Art Supervisors Association held its annual All-County Art Exhibition at Harrods High School in a well-attended exhibit by our Nassau County families. This exhibit featured artwork from remarkable students in the county from grades kindergarten through grade 12. From the James A. Dever School, Ariana Hookumcham. From the James St. Dever School, Ariana Hookumchant. Leila Jimenez. Lucy Ryan. From Howell Road, Anaya Assad. Rama Merzah. Marcus Phillips. From Wheeler Avenue. Isiosa Agpada. Chloe Castro. Elba Estamia. Michelle Parsa. Abigail Walters. From Willow Road, Alina Capacrespo. Camilla Castillo. Isaac Santana Taveras. And Carrie Smalling. Congratulations to our Nassau County All Counties Art Students. Congratulations to all Nassau County Arts students. Our next award is for students who exhibited in the Colors of Long Island exhibit at the Long Island Museum in Stony Brook. From the James St. Dever School, Violet Kanadi. Cecilia Malina. From Howell Road, Lilo Harkey. Sadie Wydenberger. From Wheeler Avenue, Charlene Ho. Zia Villa Long. From Willow Road, Samantha Airi. And Rashmi Singh. Congratulations to our Colors of Long Island exhibit winners. Congratulations. Our next award is another award from the New York State Art Teachers Association. This award is for students who participated in the Legislative Exhibit, which is a flagship event for Youth Art Month and Nissada's largest public display of student artwork in a government building. The exhibit is co-sponsored by the New York State United Teachers. From the James St. Dever School, Jacob Espinol. Maza Juisco. From Howell Road, Sophia Harpo. Elvin Luna. From Wheeler Avenue, Mika Carpenter. Julia de Jesus. From Willow Road, Parnee Cor. Catherine Randall. Congratulations to our students who exhibited at the Nissada Legislative Exhibit. Congratulations. Our next award is the Nissada Portfolio Project. Students receiving this award are from the James St. Dever School. This is an authentic assessment tool based on New York State learning standards that provides students with an opportunity to present portfolios of their work at local adjudication sites. So it's kind of like the art equivalent of NISMO for music. These students are Natalie Alley. Bella Diadonin. Abigail Esedichi. Leola Garcia. Samantha Garnier. Leyan Gazali. Ariana Hookumchant. Caitlin Hunt. Anaya Cor. Trevor Lavoy. Annie Raycheck. Dylan Trusty. And Frederick Vicos. Congratulations to the Nissada Portfolio Project participants. Next we have the New York State School Boards Association Art Exhibition. This is an annual art exhibit that brings student attention to student work with members of local school boards at the New York State School Board's annual convention, where students' artwork is in a virtual exhibit. From the James St. Dever School, Anaya Cor. Vinantica Roy. Yume Riono. From Wheeler Avenue, Gabrielle Chin. Rafia Chowdhury. Marson Salvia. From Willow Road, Lila Sheren Font. Benjamin Farina. Marwa Shah. Congratulations. Okay, congratulations to all our artists. And now we're on to our music awards. Our first award is the All County Music Festival Nassau Music Educators Association Band Orchestra and Chorus Participants. The All County Music Festival is an honor ensemble festival sponsored by the NMEA. The concerts take place every January. Each year, our music staff chooses students to participate in the New York State School Music Association Solo Festival. Their scores are then forwarded to a selection committee where students are chosen based on their scores and levels. This year, Valley Street 13 had an unprecedented number of students participating in the All County Music Festival. This represented the concert band orchestra and chorus. Being selected represents a commitment that students make to diligently prepare and perform solos and attend extra rehearsals. We are extremely proud of our All County students this year and are grateful to their teachers for presenting them with this opportunity. We are also thankful for the supportive parents who help in making the children's success possible. For bands Division One West and Division Two from James St. Dever, Ethan Chua. Peter Correa. Nicholas Lizkowski. Samir Karman. Jackson Ishmael. Zachary John. Nicholas Hernandez. From Howell Road, Mariana Monguia Barahona. Aaron Solomon. From Wheeler Avenue, Alexandra Brison. Logan Court. From Willow Road, Christopher Semenidis. Ryan Bayardi. Congratulations to our band students. Amanda Orchestra Division One West and Division Two from the James St. Dever School, Hannah Sierra Merella. Shabazz Singh. From Howell Road, Matthew Reyes. Miles Salvia. From Wheeler Avenue, Zara Ramsey. Riley Robinson. From Willow Road, Boliv Quar. And Audrey Comans. Congratulations to our All County Orchestra performers. And now our chorus students. From James St. Dever, Amanda Acosta. Lily Antenisen. Ariana Astorzaga. Milan Badi. Aubrey Cardiff. Adriana Gopi. Dimitra Musis. Ariana Nanavarakis. Isabella Carillo. Caitlin Hunt. Samantha Garnier. Anaya Cor. Dylan Trusty. From Howell Road, Manha Buayam. Gabrielle Chin. Brooke Davis. Navaya Austin. Kylie Washington. From Wheeler, Kaylee Bienni. Kennedy Bienni. Amalie Brison. Mia Torres. Ayesha Blake. Jacqueline Briones. Ellie Cabrija. Andrew Ellis. Brooke Flood. Carmelo Hernandez. Aiden Rodriguez. From Willow Road, Camilla Castillo. Isa George. Antonella Dutons. Lelani Renee Wiggins. Congratulations to our All County Chorus students. Congratulations to our All County Chorus students. Next, we have the Suffolk County Music Educators Association Recorder Festival, which is a wonderful opportunity for our student recorder players in grades 3 through 12, providing them with an enjoyable and unpressured introduction to the festival experience. Congratulations to the following students. From J.C. Dever, Leila Anderson, Joban Badi, Colette Ficochi, Noah Bing, Zachary Cremaquore, Luca Fabiani, Logan Macaluso, Logan Mercado, Emily Ramnarian. From Wheeler, Sophia Badawi, Kai Osaka Stewart, Raquel Cabrija, Rachel Collado, Jacob Lo, Benicio Palas, Ava Vincent, and Yacine Wallace. Congratulations to our recorder players. Our next award is for participation in the Long Island String Festival Association. These awards recognize outstanding music achievement with the Honor of Ensemble, which consists solely of our string students. They represent exceptional talent on violin, viola, cello, or bass and are nominated by their music teacher and selected by a committee to participate in the ensemble. This year, we're happy to have students from three of our schools in the String Festival. From the J.C. Dever School, Violet Hands, Lucy Ryan, from Howell Road, Matthew Reyes, and Miles Salvia. And from Wheeler Avenue, Rayyan Ali Edward Romain. Congratulations to our list of performers. Our next award is for 4th graders and their parents who participated in the Parents Educators and Kids for Peak Festival. This is for students who are participating in the All County Peak Festival, which is on a Saturday, and it engages our 4th grade students in learning and experiencing music in addition to performing. From Dever, Jacob Espaol, Paul Fusillo, Esperanza Koshi, Tasumi Reono, Lyndon Chevix, Phoenix Smart. From Howell Road, Shanaya Khan. Shanaya Khan, Dominic, Lilavwa, Elfin Luna, Emma Deleon, Victoria Ergalis Nervaz, Kenice Williams. From Wheeler Avenue, Nicole Florenko, Ella Koch, Sienna Morales, Rosalia Pimental, Sofia, sorry, Sophie Ramal, Amare Rochet, Amayas Rochet. From Willow Road, Gabriela Buchero, Zoe Caizo, Madeline Giomarino, Anthony Rosso, Erin Picky, Andreas Kanakilis. Congratulations to all of our Peak Festival participants. All right, come on up. Sit if you can in front of your heart. Smile. Too high, too high, Lyndon. Lower, thank you. Lower than your chin. Awesome, thank you. Tonight, we would like to recognize individuals in the Valley Street community, the Central High School District in particular, that have put forth great effort to achieve the highest academic honors at the conclusion of their high school years. Please join me in wishing the following individuals congratulations on their achievement, and we wish you all much success in your future. The Val Victorian from North High School, Elisa Dillon. The Val Victorian from South High School, Talija Vedancic. The Val Victorian from Central High School, Arish Talupta. The Salutatorian from Central High School, Sahana Benny. The Salutatorian from North High School, Erin Garnier. And the Salutatorian from South High School, Shalini Montbod. Congratulations on your achievement. This was second to none. We are so proud of you and we can't wait to see what you do in the future. Oh, come back for the picture. Congratulations. I love the name number six. Dr. Dunn reminded me, so congratulations. Our ones and twos. Okay, and that concludes all of our student awards. We really want to thank all the families. They're doing such an amazing job. Next, we have some special staff awards. It should be pretty quick. And then we want to invite everyone to a reception in the cafeteria. Our staff members dedicate themselves to ensuring the well-being of the children in our district. These next awards showcase the various ways that they contribute to our student success. With a welcoming smile to any coworker, parent, visitor, or staff member entering the district's office, this person continually presents herself as professional, courteous, and helpful. She takes on all responsibilities with great pride and goes above and beyond. On behalf of Mr. Antoine, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Carmelo Sorelli is commended and recognized for how he stands up for the children. He has done one contribution to the business performance over the past few years. Thank you, Carmelo. Our next award recognizes this person's exceptional efforts in making the school a better place for everyone. Congratulations to Maureen Burns, classroom teacher at the Howell Road School. Maureen has always had the role to help around the school building. Most recently, Maureen took the initiative to reorganize the literacy closet in the hallway. The new and improved closet is such an asset to the building, and it has helped teachers and staff with reading materials at all levels. Additionally, Maureen is part of multiple committees, including the Tech Committee and Curriculum and Instruction. She's a valued member helping plan, organize, and facilitate the first annual STEAM night for Howell Road. Lastly, Maureen has taken over the role as Science Coordinator for the building. She works tirelessly to organize materials. There are just so many contributions that Maureen makes to the building and community. Congratulations, and thanks to you, Howell Road is a better place today. The Guardian of Growth Award is being awarded to Dr. Jennifer Lee, psychologist at the Wheeler Avenue School. Dr. Lee fosters emotional and academic development of students in need. She has a gentle way with children and is an asset to the Wheeler Avenue School, helping to ensure all students' health and well-being. Congratulations, Dr. Lee. Valley Street 13 is proud to announce that Lisa Geary, School Librarian at the Howell Road Library, has been chosen for the prestigious title of School Librarian of the Year by NASA Bosses. This work puts Lisa in an exemplary position, and we are proud to have her as one of our librarians. She has been a key partner in supporting curriculum realignment that emphasizes areas such as SEL, Next Generation Science Standards, STEM, and Digital Literacy. In addition, the Long Island Tech and Ed Summit hosted a PD session, which was conducted by Lisa as well. Congratulations for impressing the attending crowd with her speech for all third time STEAM. Lisa has been a senior literature with STEM activities to meet digital fluency standards. Congratulations. One of our teachers is instrumental in obtaining a grant from JoviA Bank to help support our library media program. His dedication to the library is commendable and benefits all students at the J.C. Dever School. Please put your hands together for our Tom Mullin. Carol Anne White, our librarian at the Willow Road School, was being recognized for her expertise in helping create 4D STEAM with Lisa here. Her efforts are greatly appreciated and will help children benefit from their work during library time. Congratulations, Carol Anne. Our next award goes to Kristy Tavier, a speech teacher at the J.C. Dever School, for obtaining a grant from JoviA Bank for adapting books using our HCAAC symbols. Congratulations and thank you, Ms. Tavier. Tonight, we are recognizing one of our art teachers for her amazing work each day with the kids. This teacher puts in 110% and works tirelessly to make each child know they are talented and capable of doing wonderful things. This award is for coordinating the first annual district art exhibit, which fostered a sense of accomplishment and pride for very special students in the district. Aside from his wonderful accomplishment, she is being recognized as an Art Supervisors Association All County Exhibit Chairperson. Her dedication, time, and effort in organizing this incredible event have made it possible for students to showcase their artistic talents in meaningful and inspiring ways. Please join me congratulating Janice Borumsky, Our morning readers make a remarkable difference in the way children begin their school days. We commend the following individuals at the J.C. Dever School for ensuring children are safe getting out of their cars and are met with a welcoming feeling each and every day. Please accept this award. This is to Marie Dankona, Joe Ray Hafter, Jasneen O'Connell, and Teresa Matia. Our last award of the night is a very special award. We are indebted to our NASA County Police Department for their dedicated hard work each day. Ensuring public safety, as well as the safety of our students and employees, is much appreciated. Ensuring public safety, as well as the safety of our students and employees, is much appreciated. And we would like to recognize Officer Sal Sapienza for his outstanding performance with the NASA County Police Department's Fifth Precinct. In a similar way, we are so grateful for the incredible NASA County Police Department Homeland Security team that we have in our district. Thank you to the Head of NASA County Homeland Security, Lieutenant Robert Connolly, and Police Officers Kevin Glenn and Officer Greg O'Neil. Your amazing response and attention to the Valley Street 13 School District needs are second to none, and we appreciate you all and want you to know how comforting it is to know that you are there for us each and every day. Thank you so much. Congratulations. I just can't stress enough how much time and effort these gentlemen commit themselves to keep everybody in our district, not just our district, but districts in NASA County. They work under Commissioner Ryder, and I just cannot say enough wonderful things about them. Really, thank you again so much. We're gonna have a quick reception before the board meeting in the cafeteria. We invite everyone in there. There's cookies for the kids, and we'd love to see you, and you can take a picture with board members if you haven't gotten a picture already. Thank you so much.